Well, good morning, everybody. My name's Robert Lenko. It's turned nine thirty, so I'll officially open this meeting and welcome you all to it. I did volunteer as vice chair, so be warned if you volunteer, this is what can happen. You end up in the hot seat, but I will do my very best. A quick word, if I may, about Alison Coleman. I gather she's chaired the forum for many years, and I don't think she's missed a meeting in almost fifteen years, which is quite extraordinary. So, but anyway, she went in for a pre-planned operation, which I'm glad to say is not life-threatening, but she did, has had to take a few weeks off to recuperate. So I'm sure you would join me in wishing her well. And maybe I could ask Theresa to send her an email on your behalf and on my behalf to wish her a very speedy recovery. Very small bit about me, I'm a governor at Thurston Community College, which, as you know, is quite a large local authority maintained secondary school with a separate sixth form at Baiton. I've been a governor there for eight years and at present I am chair the finance committee. Excuse me, I've got a stinking cold as well, so I'm sorry if I cough occasionally. Can I just say a very quick thank you to Alison, Michael Quinton and Sonia Harbin for taking some time about ten days ago to have an online meeting with me just to get me up to speed on what was happening today. And I also wanted to thank Theresa Spilling, who also took some time last week to take me through the agenda so that we, the meeting goes smoothly. So thank you very much to them. Now, the virtual meeting etiquette, I know you're all aware of. I will keep an eye on the chat line and on your electronic hands if you have a question on any of the papers. If I happen to miss you, then please just unmute and cut in. And I may well refer to you by your initials, as unfortunately I'm not familiar with all your names, though I do have a list, so I hope you will bear with me on that. So moving swiftly on to paper A, which regarding the minutes. I should just go through the minutes page by page. If you have any issues or any inaccuracies that you've spotted, please, please shout. We'll just go page one, page two, page three, page four, page five, page six, page seven, page eight. Now, on page nine, there is an action point concerning Gemma Morgan, who I don't believe is able to be with us this morning. But in any event, the last meeting was very recent. And so the report on the Delivering Better Value Programme, she will do a report for our next meeting, which of course will be next January. So that, that has been taken care of. So moving on to page ten and eleven. So if everybody is happy with those minutes.
Robert, Andrew Berry's got his hand up.
All right, yes, Andrew, please, fire away.
Thank you, Robert. Just on page six, item six, last paragraph, it talks about Rachel lobbying MPs. And it mentions a, the academy chief executive network has been doing a joined up campaign to try and shift this position. I believe that's not CION, which is the academy chief executive network. I think that is the Suffolk Education Partnership who should be in there instead.
Right, okay, well, in that case, presumably we will correct that, Theresa, am I right?
Yes, Robert, I will correct that in the minutes, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much for that, Andrew. And sorry I didn't spot your electronic hand, but thank you. Right, any other comments on the minutes or are we happy to move on? All right, so we then move on to now the first paper, which is presented by Michael Quinton on the Schools Block Funding Formula twenty-three to twenty-four. So, Michael, over to you.
Thanks, Robert. Good morning, everybody, hope everybody as well, apart from Robert, who's got a bit of a cold at the moment. No, Sonia has as well, he's sitting, sitting opposite me, so. Righty, let's get started. So this is an update on the Schools Block Funding Formula for two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four. So what is the forum being asked to decide? So the vote on this paper is for Schools Forum to agree a two point one million transfer from the DSG reserve monies to help support the DSG deficit recovery plan. So this is slightly different from what has previously been agreed longer term, where Schools Forum have agreed to transfer naught point five percent of the Schools Block funding and transfer that over to support the deficit recovery plan. So Sonia has identified some, some reserve monies, some historical reserve monies from pre-national funding formula. There's been some central school service block underspends against regulatory element of the funding. And there's been some underspends on growth and recruitment as well when academies transfer. So overall, there's about two point one million that can be transferred over to support the deficit. And what this means is that schools won't see any reduction on their Schools Block funding in twenty-three, twenty-four. So hopefully this is a good thing. The other recommendation in this paper, although I don't think we're voting on it today, is that we should continue to follow the national funding formula as we have done over the past five years. So you can see in reasons for recommendation, point four, what the DFE are now doing to local authorities is asking them to move a lot closer to the national funding formula if they're not actually following it at the moment. And thankfully, this is a position that Suffolk and our schools do not need to face. So, you know, I'd like to thank Schools Forum a number of years ago and their wisdom to follow the national funding formula. We think it's been a good thing. We think it's led to consistency in funding for schools. And also reduces that turbulence, which we're finding a lot of local, other local authorities are actually facing at the moment, trying to bring themselves back to the national funding formula. So with regard to an update on the national funding formula for, for next year. Well, unfortunately, this paper was published before the Autumn Spending Review Statement last week. So you would have seen in the news that education did quite well. We think it's good news. And at the moment, I think we're going to get two point three billion pounds in twenty-three, twenty-four and two point three billion pounds in twenty-four, twenty-five. So I think overall, this is about between a four point three and four point five percent increase on schools funding. At the moment, we're sort of in the dark about how this will be distributed to schools. Will it be included into the Schools Block funding? Will it be included into the High Nearest Block funding? We're not sure. So as soon as we have further information on that, we can share it with, with colleagues and share it through the relevant channels. So if we just move on to the actual Schools Block. So there are a couple of changes that you just need to be aware of. So the School Supplementary Grant, which was an additional grant in this financial year to help support the cost of living increases and national insurance increases, will be rolled into the Schools Block funding. And you can see under paragraph fourteen, had the DFE proposed to roll this in. There are also some increasing factor values. So you can see there's four point three percent has been added to the free school meals factor, two point four percent to the basic entitlement and low prioritainment. Free school meals factor and English in additional language, mobility and sparsity. So that's again, all good news and it sees an increase in the Schools Block. And the minimum per pupil funding levels are also increasing slightly by naught point five percent. The other thing just to note regarding the minimum per pupil funding levels is that Suffolk being a sort of a low-funded local authority, what we've seen in the past is that a lot of our schools don't actually meet those minimum per pupil funding levels. So, and quite clearly, that means that we're not getting the funding in Suffolk that we should be. But that is actually improving over the, the past couple of years. And you can see in paragraph sixteen that, based on the current data and I've, I've used to, to set the budgets for next year, we had forty-one schools that were still being supported by the minimum per pupil funding levels. You can see in this financial year, that was actually seventy-seven. So, you know, it does mean that more money is, is going into, to, to the Schools Block and it is going into those schools that are, you know, are least funded through the, the national funding formula. So that's, so that's good news. There is still about two point four million needed to, to boost these schools used in the formula. But as I said, that possibly could change when we know more about the funding for, for twenty-three, twenty-four. And then say the last paragraph, it just reinstates what I said earlier about this. The Schools Forum have been asked over the past three years to vote on a continuation of a naught point five percent transfer from the Schools Block to support the, the deficit recovery plan. But say this year, what we're looking to do is, is transfer two point one million from DSG reserves to support the DSG deficit recovery. And this means that we're not taking any money from the Schools Block. You've got Annex A, which was the draft twenty-three, twenty-four budget submission. Again, say these figures are very, very likely to change. So it might be worthwhile me just bringing a short paper back in January just so I can highlight, you know, what the changes are when we get the, the notifications or just before Christmas normally. But it will just be an update paper and there won't be any voting involved in, in that one. Okay, thanks, Robert. I think that's it. Are there any questions at all?
Yes, thank you, Michael. Are there any, any questions from, from anybody attending, please? On that, before we take the vote, which will be for all voting members. I can't see any, any at the moment. If I may, with my apologies, just say that I failed to mention apologies, which I think is relevant. I must do that quickly because one of the members has already indicated they would like to vote positively. So Theresa, if you'll bear with me, the, the apologies are obviously from Alison Coleman, Alan Kadzow, councillor Chris Chambers, Sue Prickett, who unfortunately is not feeling very well today, but has indicated she would like to vote positively, and from Darren Woodward. So that was, I just slipped up there slightly. But anyway, I think if there are no further questions, we can move forward on to the vote, please, for that. If you are, Barbara, I don't know if you would like to launch the vote. And the vote is, do you agree a two point one million transfer from dedicated schools grant reserve monies to help support the DSG deficit recovery plan? And the vote has come up on my screen. So if you'd all like to vote now. And we have. Twelve. We've got a potential eighteen or seventeen, if I'm right. Fourteen, any more to vote? Right now, we appear to have fourteen positive votes. So I presume that is passed. All right, thank you very much indeed, everybody. Thank you. Right, so that deals with paper B. Thank you very much indeed, Michael. And we now move on to the de-delegated budgets, paper C, which is presented by Sonia Harbin. And this, of course, is only for local authority schools, as you know. But nonetheless, it's, it's important. So Sonia, over to you.
Thanks, Robert. Good morning, everybody. Yeah, just like Robert, somehow he obviously passed his cold over when we met via the medium of Teams ten days ago. So apologies if I start coughing and sniffing all day. I'll try my best not to. Yeah, this, this paper is, as Robert said, only really relevant to those representing the maintained sector as academies have their own arrangements within the trust, how they manage these services. But I just wanted to almost reiterate really that sort of by de-delegating, recommend a, the recommended element of an individual schools budget to the local authority to provide the services attached. Schools then benefit from economies of scale because, you know, and I know a lot of you have been on Schools Forum before, will know, we, we always talk about some of the smaller schools, which find it particularly difficult to, to financially manage. As an example, if a member of their teaching staff just happened to be a trade union representative that year and they then had to fund the entire cover costs without the support of the maintained school estate. So that's really what the de-delegated budgets is about. And as in previous years, the service fees from the local authority have provided detail on the annexes as how to, how this funding is used within these services. So I'll open up to any questions or if you'd like to direct specific service queries to appropriate representatives to gather any further information you'd find useful before voting. I think we'll take it from there, if that's okay.
Yes, no, I think that's fine. In fact, the first question I asked you when we met was why do this? And you did say economies of scale and with resources being so limited, we can sort of share these services out. And I think that was very powerful. Adrian, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Robert. Yes, if I can just come in for a minute for maintained sector colleagues. The appendix D, which is about the replacement of the Lamb Grant, we're actually not going to vote on this, at this meeting. We've had some very helpful discussions ahead of the meeting. And we're going to pull a small task and finish group together just to address an issue, a very important issue that was raised by school representatives. So ignore that bit of the paper. We're going to do a little bit of further work on that. So it is just appendices A to C. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Adrian. Does anybody else have any other questions for Sonia or any, any comments on this? I can't see any. I believe there are two of us, myself and Rowena Mackey, to vote on this. So if there are any other questions, Barbara, I wonder if you could launch that vote, please, which is for the secondary section, vote to, do you agree the de-delegation of funding back to the LA for SES, which are special educational services? And there it is on my screen. I voted. Any other votes? Yes, there we are. We have two votes, which is a hundred percent. So thank you very much for that. So that is passed. The vote, go on to vote three. Again, do you agree the de-delegation of funding back to the LA for support to underperforming ethnic groups and bilingual learners? So if again, if you could, yeah, thank you, launch that vote. One. And two, yes, we have a hundred percent there. So that is passed now. And then finally, we have vote four, do you agree to the de-delegation of funding back to the LA for trade unions? So if we could launch that one, Barbara, thank you. That's a yes. And a yes. Right, so that is passed as well. So that completes the voting. Thank you very much indeed. So now we move on to any other business. If anybody has to raise and also moving on then to the forward agenda, which Adrian, Sonia may wish to talk about for, for our next meetings. So has anybody else got anything to add? And or Adrian, would you like to talk about the forward agenda?
Certainly, Robert.
Thank you.
Thank you. One of the items we've obviously just made reference to earlier on, that's Gemma Morgan bringing a paper in January about an update on the Getting Best Value Out of SEND. That's a national programme. Suffolk County Council is one of the participants in that programme. So an update for forum on that would be particularly helpful. Another item that I would welcome forum members' views on is that from time to time, and today is a, is an excellent example, with Robert ably stepping in and chairing the meeting because of Alison's circumstances. We've had a few apologies and given the, the complex nature of schools, sometimes people have to apologise at the last minute. And I'd quite like to bring a set of proposals about formal substitutes. Some Schools Forum arrangements in other parts of the country have a sort of official substitute for each forum member. And that sub gets all the forum papers, actually gets an opportunity to come to forum and shadow, shadow the representative at a meeting. And I'd welcome forum's view about whether we should do, we could develop a similar arrangement. It's particularly important on those meetings where we need to debate a complex issue with others voting. So if I may, Robert, I'd open that up to forum members to see their views about that suggestion.
Well, I think personally, I think it's a very good one. Because I think we could do is that more. Well, I think personally, I think it's a very good one, because I think we could do with that more members. But possibly more experienced members of the Forum might wish to, to comment. Please do put your hands up if you'd like to, to comment on that.
I could see Wendy's, Wendy from Side Gates come in and, and suggest that's, that's a good thing. We don't want to develop if people don't think it's a good idea, but welcome thoughts and views. And then I'll hand back to, hand over to Sonia, if Sonia's got any additions, Robert, after that.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, I can't see any other comments at the moment. Sonia, would you like to join the comment? Yes, please.
Yeah, so just to really add as well, obviously following on from what Mike said about updating on the schools' budget. We'll do a quick, sort of, we might do a quick update on that in January, just on what the actual effects are. So I think everybody's sort of seen the figures being bandaged around about the additional 2.3 billion coming into the schools' budgets for next year. What we, one of the things I said we're sort of unsure about is, or we think we're sure about is that still is before they then take off the national insurance increase, so it might not be quite 2.3. So as you can appreciate, we've been, since Thursday, been busy doing a lot of calculations and trying to work it out. So it's just timing as ever, but it's generally, it's a positive story, thankfully, for schools. We think it's particularly positive as well that we've managed to get the high-nearest block contribution from reserves. And I just wanted to, if that's okay, just very quickly, just explain that that comes back. Some of that was actually from pre-funding reform reserve monies. A big chunk of that was from the central school services block that we'd held back in from the, the statutory element, which in effect would otherwise have been used towards our core funding. So, and some of that is now in recognition, actually also moving forward that the central school services block savings are being met corporately as well. So hopefully, it's a, it's a much better November story this year than it was last year for schools. So that, that's quite positive. And so we'll bring a short paper about that in January as well.
That's very good, Sonia. Thank you. It's always, always good to end on a, on a positive note. I will just officially mention that Alison Coleman did wish to vote yes for all those four votes for, the, three votes for the primary sector, so that it can be minuted appropriately. Now, does anybody else have anything they would like to add at this stage or mention? The next meeting, as you can see on your agenda sheet, is on Thursday, the twelfth of January, when I'm quite sure that Alison will be back with us. I hope so. And, but if any, if there is nothing else to add, can I thank you all very much indeed for attending? And if I may, wish you a very happy Christmas. And we will see each other in the new year. All right? Thank you very much. Bye-bye, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Job well done, Robert.